And with that, we will open up for public comments. Yes, you can.
I'll just quickly call roll and make the announcements. So council member Garcia.
Here.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here.
And public comment and participation information for this meeting is provided on the agenda, which is online at monterey.gov/agendas. In-person attendees, please keep your electronic devices muted to prevent audio interference. And thank you for participating in your city government.
Thanks, Clementine. Okay, we will now open up for public comment. General public comment? Okay, so yes, then on item, so we'll, we'll open up board committee and commission interviews, and then we'll open up the public comments on, on that portion. So please, yes.
Just to clarify, this would be on Kimberly Turgon's application.
Oh.
Oh, so we're going to start, sorry, I apologize. Yes, okay, okay, reverse. It's kind of early still, so we're good, we're gonna work through this. All right, Kim, why don't you come on up? And then let's see. Do we, can I steal these from you? Do you have, do you have them electronically? Okay.
Glad to see I'm not the only one occasionally.
We're gonna get there, we're gonna get there. Okay, give me one second here, let me, let me like try to get together a little bit better.
Do you need it?
You don't mind?
That'd be great.
I have one on your binder in your binder suite.
Oh, we're good then, we're good. Yep. Okay. Item number one, board committee and commission interviews. So we have one applicant left, which is Kim. And so I will pass it to Councilmember Garcia to kick us off with the interview.
All right. Good morning.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but if you could scoot closer to the microphone, please, then, then we'll be able to hear you on Zoom. Thank you.
What would we do without Clementine?
I know.
Yeah.
Is that better? I think it should be, yes, thanks.
I don't bite, so.
Well, thank you for being here today and for your interest in serving the community through one of our city, one of the city of Monterey's boards, commissions and committees. My name is Gino Garcia, I'm the Vice Mayor, I'm here with our Mayor Tyler Williamson. We truly appreciate the time and thought you've put into applying and your willingness to contribute to the civic life of Monterey. This is a public meeting and we'll be conducting brief interviews with each applicant. Each interview will last about 15 minutes and we have six questions we'd like to ask, and those are the ones listed there in front of you. To help us stay on schedule and make sure we cover everything, we'd appreciate if your responses, keep your, your responses succinct and focused. So I'll pass it over to our mayor.
All right, with that, I have the first question. How did you first hear about this volunteer opportunity? And why do you think you should be chosen to serve on this committee?
Well, we've lived in Monterey for about seven years now, and my husband is an architect and was on the planning commission when we lived in Marina. And then when we moved to Monterey, I especially became interested in becoming involved in the arts and have an architecture and design background myself, and so ended up on the Architectural Review Committee on the last round and just still have quite a bit of interest in the arts. And, and with that committee being disbanded, thought it might be a nice time to move over to something a little more arts related.
Okay, thank you for that.
Can you share one volunteer experience and how it affected you? What did you learn from it? And how might that experience shape your approach if elected?
So over the years, I've been on some different boards. I've been on the Board of Spectre Dance. I've been on the National Association of Contractors Board. Obviously, I've been on the Architectural Review Committee. One thing I would say that has become especially important for the Architectural Review Committee is the ability to compromise. You know, we, a lot of our, a lot of the, the presentations or issues that came to us had to do with views throughout the city, various neighbors. And so that, although quite challenging at times, people get very emotional about their homes and things like a view of the ocean and neighborhood. So that just became especially important to really try and find the best, the best compromise possible for all the parties at hand.
Awesome. Okay, with that, I'll do the next question. Have you ever attended any of the meetings for the board, commission or committee you are applying for?
That I have not.
Okay, and then as a follow-up, what aspects of the committee's work interest you most?
You know, certainly the arts, as I mentioned, you know, I have an arts background as well, and it's really my passion, especially with children. I think it's just such a, it can be such a healing and a really wonderful way to bring the community together. And so that's really part of why those, the arts and culture of the city are important to me.
And I should have mentioned this earlier for the public, we are interviewing Kimberly Turgon from District One, and she has applied to the Monterey Cultural Arts Commission. So next question, each board or commission has a regular meeting schedule. Does this schedule allow you still to commit to attending these meetings consistently? And MCAC meets first Thursday of each month at 4:00 PM?
Yes. Actually, I think the, the meetings of a first Thursday probably work a little bit better for me for the Architecture Review Committee. I do travel a decent amount for work, but am most often home by Thursday evenings and Fridays. I do spend most of my time working from home in Monterey, so I wouldn't be about the Bay Area as often. So that actually works quite well for me.
Thank you.
All right. These boards and commissions often bring together residents with different viewpoints. Can you share how you approach collaboration and respectful discussion when opinions differ?
Yeah, I do think it is important to remain respectful and everybody, going back to the ARC, with neighbors who maybe get pretty passionate about things, it is really nice just to, you know, understand that everybody's a person, everybody has a point of view, and, you know, like I said, try and find that common ground as, as best you can. Not everybody's going to be happy every time, but you just have to do your best to, to navigate through those opinions and try and find a, a common ground.
What unique perspective, skills, experiences do you think you would bring to this committee? And what would you hope to accomplish during your term if appointed?
So I, I mentioned children and arts. We have three children. They go to Monterey Bay Charter School, or the older ones went there, and the youngest one is there now. And that is something that I really value in that school is, is a lot of their incorporating art and different aspects into the learning. So that is something that I would hope to incorporate in that, in, you know, and have part of that committee or bring to that table. I have a passion for art. I, I've been an artist. I will be an artist when I retire from my day job. And so just being able to share that with, with the public and trying to find activities perhaps that, you know, would involve the, the community. I'm especially passionate about the First Theater and being involved in that. So really, just being able to share that with, with the public, I think, is what, what is important to me.
I would ask a completely unrelated question. What is your medium of choice?
You know, I've done lots of different things. I've painted, I've done ceramics, I've done work with paper, I've done printmaking. So I don't know that I have one of choice. I bake, I, I love decorating, you know, like cupcakes. I've done kids' parties that are just crazy off the, off the charts. And so really, it's kind of anything, you know, to me, as long as I'm creating, whether it's something I'm cooking or baking, or like actually making something. To me, it's all creative, and I think it's just, it's such a wonderful outlet.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I'll go ahead and close this out. Thank you very much for your time and for your interest in serving the city of Monterey. We truly appreciate the effort you've made to be here and your willingness to contribute to the community. City staff will be following up with you after we complete all interviews, which is your, your it. Our plan is to announce the appointments and selections at the November 18th City Council meeting. So thank you again and wishing you all the best.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful day.
You too. Okay. With that, we will move on to item two, which is Subcommittee Deliberations. So what I'm thinking, Gino, is we start with HPC, maybe we just like rotate through, like who starts? So maybe we, oh, sorry, let me, let's go back to public comment. And actually, I didn't take public comment on the interview part, did I? I did? Okay, okay, okay. Let's take public comment and I know too. So, sorry.
All right, so if I can get the height on this, hello? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. My name's Elizabeth Yanish, I'm a citizen here in Monterey. And it's a pleasure for me to be here this morning. Pride and commitment, trust and courage. And I am really proud to be here today to witness the last three days of these deliberations, these interviews that have been set up as a new city governance ordinance that allows the public to be here and witness your process. So as a community citizen, I do not take lightly the fact that I am able to be here today and talk for you on the importance of including the citizens in these city processes as they go forward. It is a new city precedent established by Councilwoman Rash and validated by the city's encouragement to bring the public into this process. So thank you very much. I think it, I'm proud of my city for this, that they're doing this, and believe that in many ways, we can open these doors again for other future events that, where the public can be present. Courage, it takes a lot of courage, I think, for change to happen. And when we open the doors for such events as this, where the citizenry is, is part of the process, we validate the partnership that this, that the citizens have with the city, that we are part of your work. And it is our job to also be witness and present for the process. Because without us, you know, we don't have a strong, three-legged table that we all need to do our jobs from. And it's my job, I feel, to be present here. And to speak on behalf of perhaps other citizens who can't be here at 8:30 in the morning, who are maybe off to work, or maybe can't make a Zoom. But I do believe that I'm not alone in validating this openness for, for meeting. And I think it takes courage from the citizenry, or for the, the candidates who come forward and open themselves to the public, to speak about themselves, their passions and their skill sets. Because I learned more as a resident about the fabric of my community. I've met, in these last three days of being here, I've met people, I had no idea the wealth we have in our community of people who want to be a part of this governance. So I'm, I'm really encouraged that, I mean, I just think it takes courage for them to do this, these kinds of interviews. And then finally, trust, trust is part of our partnership. And when you allow us here, you allow us to be, to grow our partnership in a strong way, strengthen our city in this way for more, more meetings like this, where they can open up for citizenry and for you to understand the role that we play in strengthening our city governing. So, so with that, I, I, I close and thank you for your attention.
Thanks.
Good morning, Tom Rowley. I'm president of the Fisherman's Flats Homeowners and Residents Association. We had two meetings this year in which our representative on the NCIP did not show up at our meetings to give a report. We nominated our association in April, an alternate. We voted. Her name is Diane Soleimani. She's a longtime resident of Monterey. She used to live on Pacific Street in the corner of Martin. She's been our, been in our neighborhood for over 10 years. She's a longstanding citizen, very well qualified to speak on issues broadly for the whole community. It's been very disappointing that not to have good representation from our existing rep, who is not, as a president, has been not keeping me informed on what the NCIP, I've had to watch the meetings on Comcast. So it's very important that the people that are appointed have support from the neighborhood. And formerly, our former alternate did not have, does not had, did not have time and had to resign. Since April, the NCIP has had many, many tough issues discussing. Diane could have helped with those discussions. Her knowledge and her experience in Monterey was bypassed because she was not appointed, because the city's procedures for appointing people were awkward. I'd like to suggest to you, if this happens again, where appointment and procedures for appointing members of committees needs to be expedited, as much as budget issues, as much as all the other issues you're facing, it's just as important. And it's good to see that November 18th, we'll finally have an alternate from our area. We are 153 houses, 48 units in the PUD in Monterey Woods. We're approximately 200 units of housing in Monterey. We have not been totally representative with an effective way, as far as I'm concerned. And the NCIP, there's very important issues before the NCIP. I watched them on TV. I was on the NCIP for over 30 years. So I'm aware of how important that committee is. So that's something I want to do, is congratulate you. And finally, getting to the end of the road since April is when we nominated and voted to have Diane be our alternate NCIP rep. And thank you for recognizing, and I understand she's the only alternate candidate right now. And one of the things you need to look at, the old way of appointing representatives for the NCIP worked. The neighborhood associations nominated, and usually the city council went along with, I only know of one example, where the city council did not accept the recommendation of the neighborhood. So you need to maybe look at the way the NCIP reps are appointed. There were never all these vacancies that you've had like here. And the other thing is, NCIP has a backlog of projects, and one of the things that, they're not lack of experience, we at one time had two city reps on the NCIP staff, and that's how we avoided a backlog, like the huge backlog, millions of dollars that we have today. So I congratulate you in finally getting to the end of the road on getting our alternate appointed from our area of Monterey. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody on Zoom? Yep. And let me, let's, I apologize, there's one more in the chamber. Anybody else in the chamber want to speak on public comment? Okay, so we have one more, and then we'll go to the caller on Zoom.
Hi, I'm Aelyn Phillippe. I'm one of the applicants for the Museum and Cultural Board. I just wanted to take a chance in person to say thank you for this opportunity to serve my local community and my home Monterey, which I'm so passionate about. So just keep it short and sweet. Thank you.
For it. Thank you. All right. With that, we'll go to our Zoom caller.
Tom, it's all you.
Good morning, everybody. I, I just want to have a lot of positive things to say. First, thank you very much to the mayor and council member for taking time out of your busy days to be here at the city council chambers, going through the process of interviewing all these very, very civically active individuals. I'm, I'm very encouraged to see all of these civic-minded people step forward to volunteer for the various boards, committees and commissions. It's, it's a big, it's a big commitment for everybody, and it's just very encouraging to, to see that, that there are these people throughout our community who are willing to give of themselves. And lastly, I'll just say that I agree 100% with what Ms. Yanish stated, having these meetings in public and allowing the public the opportunity to view how things are done, I think is a really good, positive step. You know, a lot of people probably don't tune in, but that's okay. They can always go to the recorded videos and then look back at them if they, if they want to. I think it just makes everything a lot more transparent, and I really do appreciate you taking this step. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you, Tom. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment on the item. So as far as process, you know, what I was thinking is, we could go through each of the seats and throw out who we each think the selectees should be to fill those vacancies. And so my thought is that maybe we alternate who goes first. So if you want to start, we can maybe start with HPC and, and then work, work our way from there.
Yeah, that sounds good. Actually, I haven't looked at the entire agenda. Should we, or could we begin with some comments around the process, or we save those?
No, no, please, anything you, you.
Okay. So I think I'll start with, first, the acknowledgement and appreciation to staff, Clementine, Linda, for putting together all the information for these interviews. And it's information, I mean, as we have experienced, it's a good number of candidates. So there's a lot of detail that has gone into preparation for these few days of interviews and, and now deliberations. So, and, and I think also, for me, the process felt very, very smooth, and, and it, it went at a good pace. And I think that's, that, that, that happened because of the amount of preparation that went in beforehand to, to have these interviews take place. So again, thank you so much for staff for putting in the, the work and, and all the details so that we can have a more complete picture in terms of ultimately making a decision. I want to thank the, the public for weighing in. I know it's a smaller group, but yeah, like was said, I, I think it's important to at least create the space, right, to have these conversations, to have this information visible as much as possible. And then whoever wishes to participate will do so. And, and a more heartfelt acknowledgement also to all the candidates who did come in, either in person or virtually, and share a little bit about what they bring to the table. And, and that, that for me is, I think, the part that I enjoyed the most, even in, in 15-minute increments. It, I, I really enjoyed listening to their responses and, and their enthusiasm, excitement, be a part of, you know, the, the, the fabric of our community. So it's not easy sitting in front of a group and, and trying to come up with a, a good response, right, so that eventually, you know, you get the, the position. So I, I commend folks for doing that. And I think also, there was a, a more intentional part to not only create the space, but make sure that the space created was comfortable for our candidates, because these aren't paid roles, these are volunteer roles, these are roles that we want to encourage folks, not only now, but into the future, to, to be a part of, right? We, we want folks to feel comfortable coming and knowing that, yes, we have our titles, but at the end of the day, and, and I think first and foremost, we are also residents of the city of Monterey. So we are, we're acting as, as equals, and, and we, we want to make sure that the candidates feel, feel that as well. And, and I think having this setup here, you know, it's, it's still a little intimidating, I think, because again, you're responding in front of the public. But I, I really appreciate staff looking at, at the setup as well, because we also could have been sitting up in the dais, and, but that creates a certain distance. All that to say, right, that I, I really appreciate the efforts to, to also make folks feel comfortable and at ease in, in responding. And I just want to share, overall, a point about community engagement and, and offering the, the opportunity to, again, for folks to serve in our communities. We're, and, and I'll use me language, because this is really where, how I formulate my, my logic and my, and the way that I'm formulating decisions. For me, first and foremost, what I look for is the enthusiasm to be involved. That, to me, is really the, the driver for any of these boards and commissions. Great if you have experience or some kind of background that informs the decisions that will be made during the, the tenure there. But hey, if you're just interested in being involved, hey, let's, let's sign you up, because that's the energy that I think we need to be harnessing. Will the candidate in their tenure perform to 150% or to 100% or 25%? Who knows? But as long as we're offering the opportunity for participation, I think that's really the, the main goal here. And we're talking about also being a part of boards and commissions that could serve as a con- serve as a conduit towards advocacy, right? More direct advocacy for projects, for whatever it is that the board and commission reviews. But let's also not forget that this is one conduit, right? So that if, you know, something is not happening the way that our community feels it should be happening. I know there was mention of NCIP. There are also other methods of advocating for those very projects, for, for things to, to happen in, in different ways outside of those boards and commissions, right? We, at least I always try to encourage you know, our residents to, to communicate directly with either staff or, or the rest of the council. Even outside of these boards, because that's, that's how things happen, right? That communication, those communication channels should always be maintained and nurtured. And, and that also will help, I think, the progress of each board and commission. So. A little bit about process and then I'll wrap it up. So a lot of awesome candidates and in some instances, because some candidates applied to several or multiple boards and commissions. You know, I had to make the decision, and I'm assuming the same for our mayor here, but I'm not going to speak for him. I had to make the decision of where I would place that candidate. But in doing that, that might also eliminate not opportunity, but eliminate the, the then number of candidates that we have for the other board, if that makes sense. So it's, it's a little bit of a movement to try to figure out what's the best placement, not only in terms of what the candidate brings to the table, but also in terms of the number of spots that we have available, you know, to, to appoint. So yeah, looking forward to what this finalist looks like. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for helping to set up some of the framework. And I think that's helpful for the public to be able to understand where we're coming from as it relates to making our selections. So I, I think a lot of ways actually similarly. You know, it's kind of like an Rubik's Cube a little bit and trying to match it up and create space for as many people as possible to step forward and participate. So if somebody applied for three seats, but one of those seats, one other person applied for, I think I would almost want to try to give preference to the person that only applied for that one seat and that let that, let that person that applied for three maybe go to one of those other two seats. And I think the most important thing I think does go back to how Gino phrased it, which is the level of enthusiasm. But I, I would just say, I think I, I didn't see anybody that sat in this seat or called in on the Zoom over the last week that didn't have some level of enthusiasm towards wanting to serve. And it does say a lot about somebody being able to come here and sit in the hot seat. So I just give tremendous gratitude towards those individuals. Yeah, so I think that's a little bit about where my mindset is. Oh, and I, I will throw out one other thing, which is going to be, I think, a touching point that I think we'll probably end up having more discussion on. But because the council majority previously identified the preference of limiting terms for boards, commissions and committees, similarly to the council term limits. I use that as a defining measure towards selecting as well. So if somebody's already served on a board, commission or committee for 12 years, my preference would be not to have them continue serving, even though I'm very grateful and have tremendous gratitude for their service to our community. So just to be consistent with where my vote was in that discussion and what the policy is going to be moving forward in the city, I figured it's probably best to create space for those new voices. So yeah, with that, I will, I'll pass it back to you, Councilman Garcia.
All right. Thank you. So first we'll start with HPC. And the candidates, and, and again, these are three seats that need to be filled. So the candidates that I selected on my end are Kathy Cullen, Linda Rath, and Juan Rodriguez.
Mine are the same. I'll go ahead and start with, so I think if we're consistent, I think we're probably good to just continue moving forward. Measure P, Measure S, there's one seat available. And my preference on this one is Thomas Bruno.
Mm hmm. Same.
Okay.
MCAC, there are four seats. This is where it starts getting interesting. So. Oh, actually. Let me update here because I mismarked one. So I have Malin. I have Monique. Kimberly. And Bill.
Bill.
Sorry, Bill.
Okay, so this is our first divergence. I selected Kathy as opposed to Bill and, and it goes back to the point that I was just making. Bill has served.
Clementine.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to get in in the middle of a sentence. I can wait.
No, no, you're good. You're good.
I, I believe you already said you were both interested in Ms. Cullen for HPC.
That's correct.
She would not be able to serve on both HPC and MCAC.
Okay.
And thank you for clarifying that because there are some seats, right, that where that would be possible.
Correct. It's the appeals boards and the Measure PNS committee where they can also serve on other boards.
Okay, so given that, and, and I'm going to try to clarify for the public at least where my brain's going to go here. So part of the council term limit policy ordinance is if an incumbent runs, but nobody else in the community runs, then that person can still put their name forward and they can fill the seat. So similarly, we match that to the boards, commissions and committee policy. So given that situation, I'm, I'm, I'm match Gino's preference there. Okay, so then back to me for Parks and Rec Commission, there's two seats available and.
I'm so sorry to interrupt again. We did have someone just come in and bring to my attention that it looks like we had an error on the district for Julieta Garib. And she's actually District Four, not Three. We need to double check that, but that is what I was just informed. And so I'm sorry for, if we made any error there.
No worries. No worries. It doesn't, at least from what I can see, it doesn't impact where I was going to go with this. So for my two, for Parks and Rec, I would say Sydney Crampton and Julieta.
Same. All right, so Planning Commission, we have three seats. Eric Palmer, Gabe Sanders, and Dave Stoker.
Okay, I agree with Eric Palmer and Dave Stoker. I'm going to be honest, I, I struggled with this one probably the most because this, this happens to be the one that we have the most applicants to, not surprisingly. A lot of people want to be on the Planning Commission. I struggled in particular around two individuals between Gabe and Justin Polly. They are both serving on the Architecture Review Committee currently and are both engaged in work as it relates to housing, which I think is a really important subject as it relates to the Planning Commission. I think the reason why I lean a little bit more towards Justin is because he has, he's an architect and I know that we have lost that on the ARC, on the Planning Commission. And as we're looking at merging the two, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't lose that expertise on the Planning Commission. And if I recall correctly, Clementine, I apologize for putting you on the spot here. There's currently one architect on the Planning Commission or?
That is putting me on the spot, but that would have been good information to have. Hang on one second.
And I think when we were discussing this, just to kind of fill the void here a little bit. I think when we were discussing the merger of the Planning Commission and the ARC, I think where the conversation left was to have a preference towards two architects on the Planning Commission, not necessarily a guarantee. Like not it, not it, it's not, doesn't have to be an architect, but that would be the preference. So.
Peter Silva and Terry Latosa are both architects.
Oh, okay.
Well, thank you for that context because that, that's something I didn't really consider. But it sounds like it, it would be pretty important to have that as well. So.
Well, and I apologize because I, for some reason, I thought that, that we didn't have two architects. So I can be moved to, I, I mean, honestly, like clearly I'm, I am, I am, I'm a little bit torn on that third seat. But given the updated information, I think that I could, I could be comfortable with, with Gabe.
Yeah, and this is one of those challenging choices as well because each of them applied only for Planning Commission.
And, and I would provide one additional clarification. Please.
You, you first.
Okay, I was just going to provide one additional piece of clarification, which Mike Brassfield is the incumbent in this seat. And so this is another area for me where the council policy would come into place with boards, commissions, committee, term limits. He's already served on the Planning Commission for 12 years. So that would, in my space, create opportunity for a new voice to represent in that, in that area.
And I just wanted to briefly clarify that even, just only because you mentioned that Planning Commission is the only thing they both selected, that you aren't limited to who you recommend based on what they checked off.
True. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, well, I think, I think it's reasonable context here. I'm okay with going with Justin. And then perhaps Gabe might be interested in once we're in the end of this process, see if there are any openings, see if maybe he'd be interested in any other board. So.
Love it. Okay. So I, I think we're good with that. Now we're to the NCIP seats. So for Skyline, I went with Taylor Dinehart.
Same.
I think the next one is Del Monte Beach. I'll let you start with that one.
For Del Monte Beach, I selected George McNeely.
Same.
Okay.
The next one is Deer Flats. And for Deer Flats, I went with David Overton.
Uh, same.
Oak Grove is next.
Oak Grove, I have Ilse.
Same.
Okay.
Next one is Glenwood Circle. There's only one, so Amanda, and she was great, by the way, so I'm not, not belittling her, her putting her name forward because she was wonderful and she is wonderful. I know her personally. Amanda Priest.
Um, next would be Fisherman Flats. Diane.
Same. And the last is Del Monte Grove Laguna Grande, Joseph.
Yep, same.
Awesome. Okay. Well, oh, please.
I think you may have skipped, wait, or did I? No, you didn't. Sorry. You got them all. Sorry about that.
Oh, thanks for checking.
Like Pokemon. Got to catch them all. Sorry, that was probably a nerd comment right there. So I, I also want to, as we conclude here, give a lot of gratitude to our staff. Particularly as we are having this conversation around trying to merge boards, commissions and committees together. I don't think folks in the public recognize how much capacity of our staff that that takes. And when we have a small team to do a lot of work for a full-service city, it's very taxing on them. And then that can impact the work in other spaces in which we're as residents expecting at the highest level. And so for us to transition to this space of creating a whole new system process in a way that's expanded beyond what was even previous before Mayor Clyde proposed changing it to what it was from where we just came from. I think it's great. I think it's very much needed. I, I, I support transparency. And one of the things that I, I particularly thankful for is the opportunity to create deeper relationships within the public. So you all that are paying attention may have heard from somebody that you maybe otherwise wouldn't have heard of because they expressed something about their desire to want to serve the city in a way that stroke accord with you. And that could create an opportunity for you all to work together and help create and do good things in our community. So I'm particularly thankful for it. And so anyways, I just want, wanted to thank staff because I know that this is an extra, an extra load on top of them. And they just did an impeccable job at supporting us. Clearly she kept me on track. Clementine kept me on track throughout today. So I have not had coffee yet and, and so thank you Clementine for, for your leadership on this. And thank you to the public for, for participating and being here and, and sitting through this. And thank you, Councilman Garcia, for taking this first venture with me as we transitioned to this new model. So I look forward to it and congrats to all of the nominees. Again, it'll go in front of the council at our next council meeting, which is on November 18th. And I'm hopeful for a, an, an agreeable outcome to, to the recommendations. So.
You, you mentioned something that made me think also that for our staff, they've again done a, a great job in setting this up. And for them, it continues, right? Because now that we have a recommended pool, now, yeah. So continuing to move all that information forward. So thank you acknowledging that as well. And yeah, congrats to everyone. And thank you, Mayor, for an awesome process.
Awesome. Meeting adjourned.